The Culver Town Council to order. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded on the town's YouTube channel. And participation in this meeting is your consent to be recorded and rebroadcast. At this time, if you have a cellphone or other electronic device, either turn it off or put it on mute. Second item of business is that I imagine that I see a lot of faces that I haven't seen before here, and I imagine there's some people here interested in the library. We won't address the library until citizen input. So just to let everyone know. Okay, roll call, please.
William Clevenger.
President.
Bill Githen.
Here.
Bill Ham.
Here.
Here.
President.
Stand for the flag of the legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and this is a really holy and propitious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item in the agenda is the approval of the June 27, 2023 minutes. May I have a motion?
I'm going to motion that we approve the July 25, 2023 minutes and the August 8, 2023 minutes.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved. It is 6:35. A motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-013 reserving certain property within the jurisdiction of the town of Culver, including 17664 State Road 17 and 19456 State Road 10. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Public hearing is open at 6:35.
We need to vote.
We need to vote.
Oh, yeah. Okay, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
6:35. Ordinance 2023-013, ordinance reserving certain property within the jurisdiction of the town of Culver and its two-mile boundary. Whereas the Culver Plant Commission, after legal notice and public caring thereon, has favorably recommended to the town council by a vote of seven ayes, zero nays, and no abstentions, to properly rescind the planned unit development back to suburban residential S1 from the current zoning of planned unit development for the contiguous projects on State Road 17 and State Road 10, including 17664 State Road 17 and 19456 State Road 10. Any comments in the public hearing? Yes, Steve?
If I can explain it a little bit. Periodically, the building commissioner shall report to the plan commission on planned unit developments whose time limits have expired. The applicants shall be notified. Plan commission shall determine whether to consider extending the time or to initiate action to amend the zoning as to rescind the planned unit development designation. In April of 2018, the plan commission approved rezoning of five parcels located on State Road 17 and State Road 10, including 17664 State Road 17 and 19456 State Road 10, from suburban residential S1 to planned unit development PUD. This property is owned by Culver Investment Group, sometimes referred to as Tom Besty's property. The concept plan was presented in March 2018. S1 to PUD rezoning was approved April 2018. It was ordinance 2018-005. Culver's Article 5 Planned Unit Development Ordinance states, "Time limit for approval of secondary plan is not more than 18 months following plan commission approval of primary plan. Primary plan nor secondary plan were submitted, and there's been no work started or building permits issued. Based on Article 5, Section 04083, plan commission shall determine whether to consider extending the time or to initiate action to amend the zoning map so as to rescind the planned unit development designation. Plan commission voted 700 and send the PUD designation for these properties."
Thank you. Any comments on the public hearing? Russ?
Russ Mason, 534, please. I talked to Steve about this, when the planning commission was talking about it, and according to our ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, the reversion has to be to what it was before. Am I correct?
Yes.
So there really is no contention with changing it from Todd back to S1. That's just what you have to do. However, that's going to be a problem going forward, and my thought is to try and explain to you why you should recommend to the planning commission that it be changed again to something else. S1, now that it's in town, we're going to end up with agricultural kinds of things like horses and chickens, things like that, are permitted in S1 district. Accessory buildings can be 50 feet in an S1 district, which means in town, we could see structures that high. I'm talking about accessory structures. Houses are still very tiny. There's a whole list of things that are permissible in an S1 district. This land is now town, and I don't think we want to see S1 designation in town. We have it in the past, and I don't think we should in the future. So I'm asking you, you two, at the appropriate time, make a recommendation to the planning commission that they consider other zoning. If you look at where we're going with the comprehensive plan, it looks like both sides of State Road 10 are being shown as commercial, and the rest of the area is multifamily. So one of the things that could be done is that property, because it's all one piece now that's south of 10, that could be zone R2, which would allow single-family homes, multiple families. And those two lots that are on State Road 10 on the north side could be zone C2, and they would, you know, go along with the planned changes to the comprehensive plan. So my suggestion is that after this is done, as it needs to be done, that the council talk about making a recommendation of planning commission if they look at changing S1 to a more appropriate zone.
Thank you, Russ. Anyone else wish to speak during the public hearing? Okay.
The first one, dear town council members, we are absolutely in favor of the zoning for Mr. Tom Best's property, which is adjacent to our property on the north and east converting from the PUD zoning back as soon as possible. We are hopeful that the town council will swiftly vote in favor of the S1 zoning. Thank you, Kenny and Muni Miller, in 404 State Highway 17. The second one is, to whom it may concern, we are writing this joint letter to encourage the town council to officially remove the PUD zoning designation from these five parcels and return them to their previous status of S1, and they list out the five parcels and addresses. For more than 40 years, we have owned and resided at our homes at 307 and 309 West Academy Road. We live in close proximity to these parcels and share property lines with several of them. We are pleased that during its July 18, 2023 meetings, the Culver Plan Commission voted to make these zoning changes and feel that it is in our best interest and that of the Culver community for the Culver Town Council to take similar action. Signed, William C. King, Jean A. King, and Barbara Lindhart. And then, timely to whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter to officially request the town council remove the PUD zoning designation from the five parcels listed below and reinstate them to their previous designation as S1. Again, the five parcels are listed. My husband and I lived adjacent to much of these acres for over 20 years and enjoyed the peace and serenity this area provided. As a recent widow, I am confronted, comforted by the security that I have enjoyed and was delighted by the Culver Planning Commissioner's vote to make change. It is my hope that our town council will see fit to take similar action. Thank you for your time and consideration, Joanne Klick.
Thank you. Is there anyone online for the public hearing? During none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved, minutes were given, seconded by Mr. West. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First reading. Ordinance 2023-013, an ordinance rezoning certain property within the jurisdiction of the town of Culver and its two-mile boundary. Whereas the Culver Plant Commission, after legal notice and public caring thereon, has favorably recommended to the Culver Town Council by a vote of seven ayes, zero nays, and no abstentions to properly rescind the planned unit development back to suburban residential S1 from the current zoning of planned unit development for the contiguous parcels located at State Road 17 and State Road 10, including 17664 State Road 17 and 19456 State Road 10. Is there a motion to approve on first read?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Githen, seconded by Mr. West. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed on first read. And but I want to go-
A motion that we, we could be a unanimous vote on this ordinance that we waive the second and third reading at C2.
Is that a motion?
Yes, second.
It's been moved, it's been moved by the West, seconded by Mr. Ham to rescind the rules and pass on second, third read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance passed, approved.
Mr. President, do we want to make a recommendation now that this go back to the plan commission to consider another designation from S1 to whatever they-
I think it's an excellent idea, entertain a motion.
Set your motion on second.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Githen, seconded by Mr. West, put this back to the plan commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion to open the public hearing on the ready grant.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Githen, so it's a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing open at 6:45.
Can I introduce all that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clevenger. Appreciate that. The matter concerning the ready grant, I'm not sure required a public hearing, but there's been talk for some time about the Dunes Housing Project that's going to be in the McGee property off of South Main Street, and there are lots of pieces involved in this thing, and I brought along tonight some folks to help us introduce all of that. First, Phil Fasenda, Barnes and Thornburg, who's assisted the redevelopment commission on some prior matters, and his bond counsel on this project, and then Burke Richardson, who's a legal counsel for the developer, which is Culver Equities LLC. And we thought it might be appropriate to introduce the project, where we're intending to go, give everybody kind of an update on things, and so if I may, I'd like to call on Mr. Richardson to sort of introduce what his folks, the developer, have in mind for Burke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilmen and women. For those of you who don't know, my name is Burke Richardson, House Counsel for Culver Equities LLC, which is, as you may or may not know, an entity of Alan and Chris Collins, their development group. And I'm here to introduce the Dunes Project that we've been talking about in planning process, and we're now at a point where we can share kind of the plan. I know there's several individuals here that this was the largest board they had at Walmart for us to put together, so it's the largest, you can print it up and have it on this board. So if it's hard to see, I'm happy to kind of pass it around. If that makes sense, you can take a look at it. The Dunes Development is a multifaceted housing development, and by multifaceted, I mean that it has several different types of housing so as to make use of the entire housing market that any one rural Indiana town might have. So in the development, we have a traditional apartment buildings that are three stories tall. We have patio flat apartments that are all single-story and are two-bedroom, two-bath, two-bedroom, one-bath, or the one-car garage. There's 12 of them that are together in a row. There's also duplex housing that's included in the design, and there is single, it's not condominium, it's condominium styles, freestanding homes that look much like if you've had an opportunity to go through Maple Ridge here and Culver out on 10. So the condominiums, the freestanding units are scattered through and around the outside of the multifamily area. And there's also a building that's designed for senior residents that has a centralized meeting area and has 20 units within one building that are one-bedroom, one-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath, and a centralized meeting area that's got a full kitchen, a Four Seasons room, and off the back has patio with a pergola or some type of outdoor enhancements along with fire pits and outdoor grill and those types of things for the senior or the individuals who live within the building to come together and gather, see puzzles, all kinds of stuff, have Thanksgiving dinners, bake contests, get together and grill outside and do all kinds of things for the senior building. The numbers of the different types of units, there's 121 of the freestanding condominiums, 108 apartment units, 28 duplexes and 28 duplex units, so 14 buildings, and 20 senior units, for a total of 301 units that will be, that will be constructed over four phases, and that could be over four to five years' worth of development. The last two phases are all the freestanding condominium units. The first two phases include all different types of housing. Also included in the development is a clubhouse, tennis ball courts, football courts, a playground, a swimming pool, a walking path, a dog park, and several amenities for the residents to be able to make use of. Inside the clubhouse, there'll be a small workout facility. There's a full kitchen in there for residents that can use. Use the facilities for small gatherings, book clubs, and things like that. I do have, well, we have developments like this in Columbia City, Elwood, Indiana, Warsaw, several communities like this with the multifaceted housing, and by using each type of housing that allows the community to be able to access from first-time homebuyers or just moving out of mom and dad's house all the way to seniors, and it accesses the whole array of what the housing needs may be for the community. To kind of give an idea of what a project like this looks like as it goes to completion, we have a YouTube video here of our new project in Plymouth called Centennial Crossing, and it includes all of these types of housing. And this is right as the end of Phase 2 is being completed, so you'll see some units under construction. But now all that's done and completed, if you were able to come up to Plymouth and see that, it's on the north side of Centennial Park, right off of Highway 30. So that's the clubhouse. Probably only watch about two minutes of this. There is some music, but yeah. Yeah. There's some music, but it's not Grammy-worthy or anything.
Why not?
I didn't make the video. Yeah. So these are the free, this is the style of freestanding condominium units, that there would be an HOA that would maintain all of the standards. Those longer buildings are the patio flats. Those there are eightplexes. Across the street are the traditional apartment buildings that are one-bedroom, one-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath. There's individual garage bays, that there's some of those in the design. Here you have a senior building. And this is kind of traveling down through the roads within the development. Gives an opportunity to see kind of how the houses on the right are more mature, and that's how their lawns are kind of coming in. To the left, this is all irrigated, so all the lawns have sprinklers to keep everything nice and green. That's the same plan with the project here in Culver. Everything would be irrigated and maintained by the property management company so as to stay all nice and, nice and clean and manicured.
Question. Yes, I see, going down 30, I see quite a few of the apartments occupied. What's your occupancy rate at this site?
The last three buildings along the highway just came on, and the senior building came on, and I believe that the occupancy rate is right around 94%. So those buildings have a little bit of time in the senior units. The last senior building is 20 units also that you don't see in this video here. It's the open spot there to the right. Now there's a new building that's there. Everything has a CFO. This is about 24 months from beginning of construction to this point here, and we're about 94% occupied. The senior units just kind of tend to take a little bit longer to lease up, especially as you kind of move into colder months. But everything else is pretty well full. And that's the trend that we've seen in all of the developments. In Columbia City in Phase 1, we filled 96 units in 47 days, which was a few years ago. Elwood, Indiana, which is a small town east of Kokomo, they have one major employer, is Elwood's Red Gold. That's 100% full, and that's got a senior building. And that's, again, was the delay there, was the senior building, but that and the smaller, you know, small community filled up pretty quickly as well.
I don't mean them in that place, but things must be going pretty well, because I heard you have an option on the land to the south there, or to the east for other, for more expansion on this project.
Oh, on Centennial?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, so that's part of my job, is to go out and try and find other opportunities for housing. Again, this project is 24 months from beginning to final CFO. You're at 94%. The houses were leased or sold about as fast as they came on. The apartments were rented about as fast. We see a 50-50% mix, 50% of Marshall County residents and 50% of outside of Marshall County of moving into the units. 24 of the freestanding homes have been sold, 34 are leased in their full. And so with that type of assumption of the asset, there's also, you know, we also are building 19 more homes in Plymouth, or another development, and looking for other lands to build in Plymouth, because there's such a huge need for housing and rooftops in almost any rural Indiana town. And so with the need strong there in Plymouth, we're trying to get as much as we can.
I'm just curious, is there a agent in Indiana? Can you state your name and your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jinter Budges, 232 South.
Yes, so for the HOA area, the condominiums, as they extend on the outside portion of the building, there would be an HOA fee. That hasn't been exactly determined yet. The HOA fee in Centennial Park or Centennial Crossing is $125 a month. 75 of that, 65 goes to the HOA maintenance, regular lawn mowing and regular maintenance, fertilization, that kind of thing. $10 goes towards a rental fee for the clubhouse and the use of the pool for the HOA members, because the clubhouse, everything is outside of the HOA. So the members in the HOA don't pay for the pool, they don't pay for some breaks, they don't have any responsibilities there, but they do pay 10 bucks a month to be able to use it. And then the multifamily portion pays for all the regular maintenance and care for them. And then $50 a month goes towards a reserve replacement fund, which is required by law for us to have in the event down the road you have some type of casualty, a tornado or something, have to pay the insurance deductible, or if there's some type of damage that needs to be repaired, the DHOA covers, they go to that reserve replacement fund. That could be roofs in 25 to 30 years. If a roof just matures and needs to be repaired, that's where you use that reserve replacement. Yeah.
Eddie Stallings, Bible Six East, Lake Shore Drive. I have two questions.
Yeah.
One is, in your senior housing, will that be as the one we have income asset-based, or will that be open to any seniors?
It's market rate, and usually the rents right now, I think, is anywhere between 850 and 1100, depending upon the unit that's rented. And we call it hybrid assisted living in that we don't provide any services, but we have trusted referrals that we submit to individuals who may need, some of them may just need laundry, or they need laundry cleaning. They don't need fully assisted living, and they could get that nice or much bigger unit, and the services that they need for much less cost than a fully assisted living facility would.
My second question is, speaking to the Dunes particularly, what, how many of those $300, I was going to say, will be rentals?
The total number of rentals and sales, the center portion, if you look at the plan, where it's around the multifamily, has 18 of the freestanding condos. Those will all be rentals from the outside portion. There's, on the, on the north side is where the duplexes and things, those will all be sold, and then there could be a mix between in there of sold and rentals that are owned by the development, and that can fluctuate over time. Dictates by the market or whatever it might be. Over time, there's a desire to sell some of those. Right now in Centennial, 24 are sold, 34 are held by the development, and those could be sold at a later time and just kind of a mature, a maturation of the development, and eventually all of them may be sold. It just depends upon market situations and-
So your first unit, which we'll start with, are the rentals? And when you develop this to start with?
Yeah, so the, the Phase 1 has a few rents, I guess the Phase 1 has duplexes and freestanding condos, but also has the clubhouse and apartments and those types of things. Phase 2 has kind of flipped, it's more sold of the freestanding condos and a few rentals. So Phase 1 and Phase 2 is kind of that northern portion. Phase 3 and 4 is kind of the southern portion of the condominiums.
And the 3 and 4 is more the privately owned?
Yeah, you could kind of, yeah, along those lines, for sure, say that. A lot of times, you may have a unit that's marked to be sold, but if it doesn't sell and someone says, hey, I really want to lease one, then you can lease it. There's no requirement that one has to be sold or leased. What's that?
There are no rules about renting? I mean, is it, is it long-term rental or just-
Sure, sure, yeah, it's all 12-month leases. Yeah, or could be longer, 14. Sometimes they'll do a discount where they say, you know, the first two months, or those types of things. You might end up with a 14, something along those lines.
And how much do you expect those homes to sell for?
Well, I mean, that's kind of the, well, I hate to say million-dollar question, hopefully, much less than million-dollar question, but the hope is that there are going to be expensive homes in the development. A lot of that's going to be in duplexes. So the duplexes, as they're designed now, are large duplexes, they're not small duplexes. And those will have a higher price tag, but the benefit of that is it helps us to cover the cost of infrastructure throughout the whole development and allows us to try and bring that cost of a home down. So we have, we're building in Menominee Heights now, right by Menominee School in Plymouth, and that was all laid out already. We put in the infrastructure and purchased the land, and they don't, the lots, those do have lots, those lots are about $40,000 cost, just the infrastructure, before you build a structure. So that cost is exceptionally high right now, and it's only going up with the cost of materials. So the more, if we have an opportunity to sell some of these homes at a higher price point in the four, high fours, mid fours, low fours, that allows us to use some of that money to pay for the infrastructure so that you can end up with homes, hopefully in the high twos, low threes, that allows on that, those other phases for more affordable type housing. The affordable housing that we're trying to work off of is the Indiana Department of Economic, IEDC, Indiana Economic Development Company. And their definition is 30% of your household income devoted towards your living expenses being home, utilities, and insurance. So 30%, if you had $100,000, that's $260,000. Leaves you about $2,500 a month, $260,000 house, right about now. So if we could try and get that down to that number through using Tiff Financing, Ready Grant process, and a whole plethora of internal mechanisms that Alan and Chris have put in place over 50 years of development, we can try and get that price down as low as possible to have that $250,000 house. Um, we can try and get that price down as low as possible to have that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. As time goes on and prices fluctuate, uh, that becomes easier or harder. Um, but like I said, if you have forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars in a lot or the ground, and then you got to build the house on top of it. Cost of materials is high, um.
Will they also stand? Will they own the land if the house is on or not?
In a condominium ownership, they own a portion of the whole land, so they don't have a lot that says. From here to here and front to back is my land and I can do whatever I want with it. It's not like a subdivision. What's that?
I'm referring to the homes.
Right, yeah, so the the freestanding condominiums, they'll own. Kind of conceptual idea, they'll own a equal interest in the whole land um as everybody else in the development. So, um, over Maple Ridge, as a condominium like that is, um, they don't own the grounds, they own the unit, the house. Be simple, just like anybody else would own out to the neighborhood. It's just they don't own the ground, they own the divided interest of the ground. Yeah.
Uh, Jim, uh, four fifty-one Lakeview Street, Oklahoma. Uh, what will be the vehicle access to this?
So was it entry to the entry, the entry points to the domes, all right? So there's one on the north side of the current garden court and there's one on the south side on Main Street, so two entrances.
So the entrances will solely be off of Main Street?
Correct.
Yeah. Nothing back to the west?
No, no. And in in the thought process on that, um. You know, anything is possible as you're trying to design and look at things, what are the options? When we looked at that. There is, you know, a way to design something so that there would be a pass through to seventeen. And there's obviously benefits to that for, you know, if someone were to avoid uh traffic in town and those types of things and access to the development. Um, the drawback is for the development, you have people that are just going to drive through. And drive a high rate of speed on a straight shot all the way out to seventeen, but we didn't want to have. You know, we kind of lean towards not having that as opposed to having it. So. Uh, if someone, you know, if you're leaving the development and you want to get out to seventeen, you just turn south on. Main and you know, the Tammerack and and head out to seventeen that way as opposed to kind of creating a bypass or shortcut through the development. With kids and things playing outside, we just didn't want to lean that direction. Benefits and drawbacks both ways. Um.
Our justice, no.
Yeah, that's just kind of how we how we thought about it last week now. And in order to do that, we would lose a unit also, continue that upstream.
Karen Schuman, Superintendent Culver Schools, right, Southern Schools, right. Um, how many students in that do you think you got from the schools from that development?
Um, I don't know that I I don't have that statistic, um, but I think it follows the traditional, I think it's. Uh, isn't it for, or what was it, one in one in three, every three units is. I can't remember the exact number, uh, but we can try and track that down and see how many students are registered in the in the development. Uh, but I don't know for certain.
And then how about tax structure? They all, I mean, I know there's a lot of questions in that, but what is your tax structure design for?
In terms of the property taxes? So, uh, when it comes to the condominiums, each condominium owner has their taxes for their improvements on their home. Uh, and then the multifamily is based upon the income approach value. Which they have a strong relationship with the uh Marshall County Assessor's Office and we work through our income approach and, uh, you know, we do that. For Centennial, we have other several other developments uh in Marshall County that uh they're well aware of. What the apartment design is like and how many units there are, how many square feet. So they're pretty good at finding that assessment pretty quickly and uh they know what the rents are and the incomes are. So with that relationship, that kind of works on pretty smoothly.
Yeah. My question is. More directed at the council, I guess, is that. You're adding three hundred and one. Sewer connections. To our sewer plant. And that's a sizable number when you think of it in terms of a percentage. Is are we confident that we, A, it's it's our plant currently is big enough? Or are we five years down the road, all of a sudden you're going to be stirring something else in the face saying, oh, boy, we're not big enough, would we have to? Face this problem again?
Yeah, no, uh, Bob talked with uh Midwest Engineering and uh. It's his opinion and their opinion, we have the capacity for three hundred units at this point. Now, we're, you know, not going to be able to extend much farther than that because it is going to take up a lot of the capacity that's still there, but. Uh, we do have capacity at this point.
Okay.
Uh, thanks, Burke, and you can hang around for some more questions.
Another question.
Oh, okay.
Very interesting, five twenty south. Um, there has been discussion about uh the ability to absorb. Uh, this kind of construction and and population, I've mentioned sewage or electric. But I think a real concern would be fire, rescue and police. We can't even hire those police that we need now. How are we going to be able to maintain this development in the manner we need to for property?
Sure, that a lot of that question is going to kind of be for the city or town to kind of determine. What I can say on our end is we have to go through a process of making sure to take everything to those individual services. And have them do their analysis and then they report back to the council or the technical review committee that says. You know, here's our issue, our concern. So we're complying with that process. And then it may be a question for the city because they, you know, do we have the capacity to do that? What's that? What are the ramifications of those sorts of things? That have to happen. Again, I'm sure that will be here uh a lot, uh, answering questions and things. I'm happy to stick around.
Yeah, stick around because we're still going on this. The answer to that question, fire and and uh. Uh, police protection usually are the least expensive items to provide from the town. We usually have a much more expensive items to provide than than that. Uh, thanks, Burke. Um, and then still part of the kind of where we are on all this. Uh, back in, I thought Wade, was it twenty-ten, we annexed the McGee property or twenty-thirteen, twenty-eleven? And it's when we annexed that property, um. We had an obligation to provide water, sewer services, city town services to that property within three years. Well. Here is twenty-twenty-three and, you know, we still haven't done any of that. Uh, now we've annexed the Beachview properties, uh, which are south of there and we again are under the situation to uh. To provide services. So, uh, a year or so ago, um, the Burke and his group came to with the town and with this proposal of our housing project. And it kind of wanted us to. Uh, assist in the uh infrastructure development as an incentive for going forward with the project. And uh about that same time, uh, our team here at the at the town was aware that. Uh, the Indiana uh Economic Development Corporation had received. A huge amount of money from the coronavirus state fiscal recovery funds. You'll remember those folks at the federal government were giving. Trillions of dollars away as part of the AARP thing. Uh, some of that went to the state of Indiana, some of that went to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And as a subrecipient or as a part of that outfit is there was a a group in the Northern Indiana Regional Development Authority, which is. Uh, a region made up of Saint Joe, Elkhart, Marshall uh area. And uh they had what was called ready grants, um, with and some of these things, they were promoting actually. Uh, towns applying for these ready grants to assist in uh housing developments, housing projects. Statewide, probably nationwide, housing shortage. So this was one of the things that was proposed. And uh, there was a discussion then with the ready grant people uh about assisting in the hot dunes housing uh prospects and those folks cooperated. And uh, we made application and uh the ready people are uh prepared to uh. Yeah, award us some grant funds of one point three million dollars. Uh, but there's, you know. Things that have to go along with that. One of them is that the town has to match those funds and there's a requirement of uh other ratios involved. So, uh, part of the reason for the public hearing tonight is to talk about. Uh, approval of the uh grant agreement uh between uh the town of Culver and uh the RDA folks. Um, so a- and uh we. I'll have Phil talk a little bit more. Uh, we are still negotiating with the developer about what the final terms of this is going to look like. What the final development agreement is going to look like. Uh, but before we can get too far down the road, we have to make sure that we're going to be able to. Have in place so one point three billion dollars of the ready grant. So, um, one of the things I'm going to ask that we do after tonight's public hearing is uh approve the uh uh grant agreement with the RDA. Now, the grant agreement with the RDA is between the town of Culver and the RDA. As you all know, we are relying on the redevelopment commission to uh that help fund and pay for that one point three million now. Part of a uh economic development bond kind of thing. So, uh, we prepared uh a a grant sub-agreement between the redevelopment commission and the town of Culver. So we can have them on the dotted line that they're the ones that are going to pay one point three million.
Right.
And there are some other provisions in the subrecipient agreement about what the town's going to provide, what the redevelopment is going to provide. And I think I shared all of those with the with the council before and we shared them with the redevelopment commission. So, uh, we will need to approve this subrecipient agreement with the uh with the redevelopment commission. And the sub-grant, uh, the grant agreement with the RDA at some point after tonight's meeting. So, uh, if we are going to provide uh an incentive, an infrastructure, streets. Um, yeah, sewer, water, uh, storm drains and so forth. Uh, you know, how how it is all of that work and how do we get, how does that get paid? And so that's when I. Got to turn it over to our expert here and and there. Uh, and I he'll probably tell you he's been leaning on Baker Tilly for some financial assistance, as have I and as a lot of people. So anyway, Phil, I. Could leave you the floor.
Good evening, everybody. Phil, Senator from Barnes and Dorberk. Um, so. As Jim mentioned, uh, as far as the ready grant goes, there has to be a match and the match needs to be one point three million and also the developer. Um, uh. Berks, Burke Richardson and 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 his folks uh came to the came to the town and 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 asked for additional assistance. Uh, for infrastructure, for public infrastructure that was going to be done in connection with the Dunes Project. Um, there's also a a another development uh for executive storage that would be south of the Dunes and south and east of the Dunes. And uh, that can be part of this uh TIF area that we're that we're discussing. So the so the um, the redevelopment, the RDA um uh allows for the town's match to take. The form of this, um, uh. What would be bonds that would be backed by TIF that are uh and that that TIF is tax agreement finance that's generated. Um, essentially, it's prop, it's the it's captured property taxes from the um development itself. A little bit of history, there didn't used to be, sure, Wes knows this well, that we didn't used to be able to collect. Um, uh, state by state law, um, uh, into TIF, anything that was residential, it always was commercial. Traditionally commercial, and this goes back thirty-five, forty years. Um. But recently, because of housing shortages, et cetera, desire to have more people live in Indiana and maybe Illinois, places like that. That uh, that the state legislature decided, well, we'll we'll allow for uh collection of 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 TIF revenues on residential. And so, uh, there are numerous, uh, um, especially with the most recent changes in the state law, which makes it. Even easier to proceed uh with less less um administrative. Uh, steps to proceed to declare uh an area that is that is residential. Um, as a as a TIF area and and to pay for uh public improvements, as Jim said, sewer, water, uh, et cetera. Um, so the the. And as um, as Jim mentioned, worship, the town is currently negotiating a development agreement with the developer. With with Culver Equities. Um. There, uh, we we're not yet through that. In fact, we're uh uh in in the middle of it. Um, uh, and so therefore, uh, the question of how much incentive, what size TIF bond. Um, uh, those are things that are still open. It's going to be more than the match. It's going to be more than the million three because the amount of infrastructure is. Um, is is that um, the expense for the infrastructure is more than the million three. If you if you add the match, it's two million six, but there's the infrastructure cost exceeds that. Um, and so, uh, we're still working with the developer and working with Faker Tilly to run numbers and tell us, okay, what size? What size of an incentive can we come and grant? Also, as part of the discussions with the developer, there uh from day one, there's always been a discussion of some sort of split. Of so this TIF revenue that's coming in uh will not be entirely uh used to pay off bonds on the on the development. Instead, there will be a percentage that comes to the art, to the redevelopment commission, to the town, to be spent on other projects that would be on. Um, Mr. Booster Band's uh list, um, of things to do around town. So, so and that that percentage has not been finally negotiated, but. This is something that, you know, you saw the Centennial project, this is something that is very similar to what transpired in in. Um, in terms of an incentive, um, I don't think that they have ready dollars. I don't think, yeah, we didn't have state dollars that came in as part of. That project we do, which is which is good and um, and we either use it or lose it. Uh, so if we don't do the project, then that those dollars will go away. Um. And what we're contemplating just from forty thousand feet is uh uh. A traditional TIF area that would include the um more commercial. Um, uh, projects, commercial and tight projects that that Burke Richardson referred to. That would be like the apartments and the clubhouse and the senior living. Um, the, I mentioned the executive storage facility that's south and east. Um, those can be combined into one traditional commercial. Uh, TIF area and then the remainder would be the residential housing that surrounds. Um, all of the commercial uses. And uh, we'd end up uh pledging both of those to the repayment of. Um, TIF bonds that we will, that that the town would issue and the redevelopment commission would pledge the TIF revenues to them. And the developer would purchase them. So, uh. Because they're developer purchase bonds, there's no pledge of any general uh tax or 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 any anything along those lines of the town. Okay, so there's no, the town is taking on no responsibility to pay those funds other than from. The the TIF revenues that's generated from the project. So if there isn't sufficient TIF revenue, let's say that the project only gets half built for some reason. And uh, uh, and there isn't sufficient TIF revenue, that's on the developer because the developer purchased the bonds. It's not on, i- if there isn't sufficient revenue, the bonds don't get paid. So, uh, this isn't something where the town comes in with a with its with its property taxes, general property taxes. Or general levy or anything along those lines and pays for the bonds. They do not. Um. Yeah, should I go through the calendar a little bit? Okay, so so uh in in particular, there is an uh fairly um. Uh, in in um, wholesome, I would say, process under Indiana law to get through. The various steps to set up the TIF area. Um, first there there will be, we need to publish a notice. On the residential side, we need to publish a notice and have a public meeting to discuss. Not just somewhere from this, but but this meeting tonight, uh, but but um more involved, but more detail. Um, uh, there will be a meeting of the proposed meeting of the redevelopment commission that would take place in mid-October. And we would give a thirty-day notice, uh, newspaper notice for anybody to 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 come in and and discuss the project. Um, Mr. Richardson will be here, maybe some others. Mr. Richardson will be here, maybe some others from his company. And we, there needs to be communication with the schools ahead of time, and, and also with the auditor, et cetera, under, under statute. And so that would all have to take place. There'd have to be a, a, a plan for the area, not dissimilar from an economic development plan that would go with a traditional TIF area. That is, what, what are we building? You know, what are the benefits to the, to the community? Those types of things will be captured in this plan. We'll also have to go through steps at the council. We will add the October 16 meeting, I failed to mention, we will also amend the existing, we have what we call Culver 1 and Culver 2 for TIF areas. This would be an amendment to Culver 1. And so we would extend Culver 1 to capture the new executive storage, and we would essentially carve out a new TIF area within Culver 1 for, and add a little bit of additional territory to Culver 1 to capture the entire Dunes development. And then, that, that, that process for declaring the, the new TIF areas, we do an initial meeting at the October 16 meeting declaring the, the new areas. Then there's a step to go to the planning commission, then go to the, comes back to the town council for approval. After the town council, if the town council should discern to approve, we have another public hearing requirement with a notice where there's a, it comes back to the redevelopment commission after input from the public and a public hearing to declare the area. And in this case, it's two areas. So, we've divided it into areas. We have to take some, some additional steps because, because this is, involves villas and townhomes. There's a special step under Indiana law to declare it as an economic development target area, which requires additional steps of economic development commission for the town and, and the town council. Also, then we'll, we'll take steps to issue the bonds, and the bonds are issued by the town. And as I mentioned, the redevelopment commission pledges TIF. Those will happen simultaneously, but these other meetings I'm discussing. And there will be also an economic development commission meeting. There will be a public economic development commission meeting. So, there will be a lot of public process prior to the issuance of the bonds and the approval of, of the development. There, the development agreement that we, that the town negotiates with the developer will also be approved at one of these meetings. So, that would be a, a public document, and will be approved at one of these meetings.
Hey, thanks. Anybody got questions about?
Here, Marty Osterman, 504 East Washington Street. I'm going to speak on behalf of the redevelopment commission, if I could, just, just a little bit, on, on this project. We haven't really talked about the goals, you know, why, why do we, why do we want, you know, this project? And there's really three of them. One is to create affordable housing, workforce housing. Affordable housing has a particular meaning in Indiana, so I'm going to draw there. But workforce housing, and Burke, you correct me if I'm wrong, but in phase one of this is where a lot of that two-bedroom, two-bath apartment-type buildings that will be part of phase one, and the rental projected from that, and, and of course, you can't, you know, there's no guarantees on this, but in the area of 1,000, 1,200 a month, if I understand that properly. So, a couple of our waitstaff at Lake House, you know, $600 a month each, you know, can team up on a two-bedroom, two-bath, and a four, it's really, really nice housing. For a town of 1,100, usually at small towns, the, the workforce leaves town to go to work, and then they come back and, almost the exact opposite. You know, we, we import workers everything, and, and we have a need to house them. And with this project, we will have the ability to do more of that. So, that's goal one. Goal two is just to increase the tax revenue. So, that increase in tax base, and this is just generally a good thing. The third thing is several organizations, civic organizations around town have been looking to attract remote workforce, the remote workforce in certain countries increasing significantly. And, and it's an attractive demographic, and a demographic that would be attracted to a nice town on the lake, right? And that, this type of housing would prove attractive, especially now that we have the internet, the fiber in town to, to that particular workforce. So, it, it supports some of the other goals of the town. Phil, describing the calendar just now, it sounded, if it sounded complex to you, it's because it is. And so you got the town council, the redevelopment commission, the planning commission. There is an economic development commission that has to be revived, right? And in order, and all, there's going to be public meetings associated with all of that. And this is going to take place over the course of a minimum of 60 days and probably take us almost to the end of the year before it's all done. And you're going to have plenty of opportunity to understand this project, ask questions about this project. We haven't talked about what kind of traffic is going to get created by it, and all kinds of other questions that you're going to have. And we're going to have opportunities to talk about all of that along the way. And it's my commitment to try to make this process as transparent as we can to all of you so that you understand it and are comfortable with, with the town moving forward with it. Thank you. Thanks, Marty.
Any other questions in the audience? Yes, sir.
Tom Uhas, 430 State Street. Redevelopment commission question. Is not our TIF one soon to expire?
So, TIF one, I'm trying to remember the, the.
It's either 34 or 36.
Okay.
I can't remember which one it is. But then there were some that were added in 2014, and they have 25 years.
Right. So, so what expires? A little bit of explanation on that. A redevelopment, what you, what you have is an economic development area that TIF one, what we call TIF one, short form TIF one, is really an economic development area. An economic development area does not have a termination date. Okay? What has a termination date are what we call allocation areas, or what, what we all popularly call TIF areas within an economic development area. So, TIF ones is, is, doesn't have, what we're proposing to do is to declare a brand-new area with a new life within an economic development area that doesn't have a life, doesn't have a, an expiration date. So then, so the new, what will expire are existing TIF areas within our economic development area one. Does that help? I, you know, be complex.
I, unless Sally, it's been redone, I thought, I thought we were coming to the end of either TIF one or TIF two in the near, I mean, like, right about this time, unless you folks in the last couple of years have redone it.
The first number of, of home, or of businesses that were put into TIF one, they expire in either 34 or 36, and I can't remember.
I didn't think it was anywhere near that.
Tom, I think you're thinking about the bonds being, as opposed to the expiration of the.
No, I knew the bonds are going to be done soon.
In 2014, there were 14 or 20 new, first, that were added in. Their 25 years starts at 2014 and goes for 25 years. The residential TIF that would be inside TIF one, whatever year that's put in, 2023, 2024, at the latest, the residential TIF can only be for 20 years, so that would last 20 years.
I guess my question is, is this new TIF that's going to be established resetting the clock since it's incorporating the original TIF one?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to explain. It's hard to, the, the, the allocation areas that exist today have their own clocks, and, and you mentioned some that we discussed later in 2014, and they would have gone 25 years from 2014. There are those that are earlier than that and may be expiring, you know, sooner. This is going to be a brand-new one with a new 20-year clock. Okay? And, and it will go for 20 years. The commercial allocation area that I discussed will go for 25, because under the state law, it's a new, it's a new area that'll last for 25 years.
Okay, and then my second question, has there any, been any numbers run as to the projection as to how long it would take to recoup the money that redevelopment is putting into this project if, from TIF money? So, in other words, it's going to be 1.3 mil, plus we're going to be paying to establish a bond, correct? I don't think you're doing it for free.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, the, so the, yes, so the cost of what calls cost of issuance, which would be people like me and the municipal advisor, the accountants, any, anyone else that is part of the bond, yes, that's been factored in. The, the cost of the project get factored into the bond. And then, as I mentioned before, there will be a split. So, depending on what that split is between the, what the redevelopment commission keeps and what they allow to be pledged towards the bond, the bond, the bond can be sized on the split that is, let's call it the developer's split. Okay? And, and that's the, that's the revenue that can be pledged towards the bond. That'll dictate how big of a bond you can do. And, yeah, all those costs will be factored into the bond.
Yeah, and I have one other question, maybe not to Phil, but we're just, we're going to pledge 1.3, we're going to get, so we got 2.6 mil. What are we expecting costs to run the water, sewer, infrastructure, not only to the Dunes, but then out to the executive?
They're much higher than that, and we're probably are looking at a bond that's much higher than the 2.6.
Okay, that was my question. Where's that additional money's coming from?
Coming from that, that bond that'll be higher than the 2.6.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The projections for the water sewer and the streets and so forth are much higher than, than 2.6, much higher.
If I, if I may, just briefly, as, sorry to send it, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but with the developer bond, you ask who pays for the cost of issuance for, Mr. Send this time, as a developer purchasing the bond, the developer pays for it.
Okay.
Because we're, we're paying the cost of issuance because we're absorbing the, the cost of the bond. So, the town is not out those funds to pay for this process here. The developer, in this particular structure, the developer pays for it. The cost of the infrastructure as a whole, you're looking at close to four times the 2.6 million, so nine to almost $10 million for infrastructure costs. And part of that is, just to, just to kind of add in, part of that goes from the Dunes to the executive storage. That's really a portion, a major portion that the town is already committed to.
Right.
For the Howard property.
Right.
We're working that into this bond, cost of that. It does benefit us to get it to the, the executive storage, but that's also the cost of about $900,000 just for labor and materials to extend out to that Howard property, and then we have to cross the. So, we're absorbing that into the bond as well. Again, that's purchased by the developers. Again, the only way we get paid back is by increasing the property tax base. And with an 80/20 split, if we were looking at that, or 70, 30, 80, 20, oftentimes, when we look at these development bonds, we're looking at 100% because the revenue that's generated by the bond is nowhere near the cost of the infrastructure. So, we need 100% to try and cover as much of that infrastructure cost as we can, to reduce the cost of residence purchase. But we understand the need for the town to see, or we, we partner with the town to try and help provide some benefit immediately to redevelopment so that they can address some, the wants and needs of the amenities, things for the community. So, by doing that, we understand that we're going to be short on the total cost of the infrastructure, but we think it's a benefit to the town to do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
You know, I have to say, a lot of you people have great, great questions. I, I think they're good questions. So, I'm sure.
Any questions online? If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved by Mr. West, a second. Second with Mr. Githens. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public. Hearing is closed at 7:40.
Okay, Mr. President, do you want to take this up now, or you want to wait till a little later? Subrecipient agreement with the redevelopment.
Let's do it now.
As I suggested, and as you've all seen, the grantee subrecipient agreements between the town of Culver and the Culver Redevelopment Commission, the redevelopment commission approved the agreement last night. They committed to the matching funds of the 1.3 million. There are a number of other terms that basically say everybody's going to comply with the requirements of the ready grant going forward. Some of those include that they, you know, that the town and also redevelopment will review and comment on the final plans and specifications. We're going to contract with a certified grant administrator. We've already done that with Shannon McCloth. We're going to contract with a professional engineer, make sure the bidding codes and requirements are designed properly. We're going to contract with a professional inspector to make sure the construction is completed according to design. We'll have to advertise and open bids at public meetings. And then also, we submit invoices and so forth to the redevelopment commission so they are confident that we're spending the 1.3 million they're going to give us on this project. So, with that, I would ask that you look for a motion to approve the grantee subrecipient agreement between the town of Culver and Culver Redevelopment Commission and authorize the president of the town council to sign that document.
I suggest we, around that motion for a few minutes till we have a full council president. Pardon? Mr. Hammond? But I would make a motion to approve that.
All right, ready? Sir, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Githens. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Until Bill gets back.
Well, I didn't see Bill was gone.
Maybe it's a suggestion after we finish doing this project and take the tours event recess so that anybody, I know you want to stay. I said I should have brought, I should have had my wife join me so we could.
There you go.
Yeah. While, while Bill is out, then, if you approve the subrecipient grant agreement, then I feel comfortable that the redevelopment commission is going to help us with the 1.3 million, and we can enter into this grant agreement with RDA. It's a rather long document. It includes all of the kind of requirements for following their, you know, being in compliance and all those kinds of things. Then maybe I'll take that up after you.
The motion that was made was to approve the, the agreement between ourselves and the redevelopment commission, where the redevelopment commission is taking responsibility for the funding on this project. And I made that motion.
And it's been seconded.
Bill Githens.
Bill Githens, seconded, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Okay.
Let's.
Let me get the subrecipient agreement approved and then take.
Okay.
So, the subgrant agreement is between RDA, the Regional Development Authority, and the town of Culver. And as I said, it basically says, you know, we're going to comply with all of the RDA requirements, rules, regulations, if you go through this, are typical of what you've seen with federal projects, you know, all those regulations and so forth. Then we're going to do all of those. We got a grant administrator to help us on all of those things. So, I'd ask that, again, you have a motion to approve the grant agreement with the RDA and authorize the town council president to sign the agreement.
So moved. Seconded by Mr. Githens, seconded by Mr. West. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Been moved by Mr. Githens, seconded by Mr. West, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Let's take a ten minute break.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bert.
Thank you.
Okay, let's let's reconvene, reconvene. Next on the agenda is the Economic Development Commission.
You know.
I haven't all of it.
Yeah. We took that off, but at some
All right, okay.
But at some point, the president's
Okay, got the wrong agenda, okay. Okay, next is ordinance two thousand twenty three dash oh one four. An ordinance to amend ordinance two thousand twenty two dash oh oh nine and two thousand twenty three dash oh oh five. An ordinance establishing the wage and salary rates of elected officers and non-elected officers and employees of the Town of Culver. Whereas Indiana Code thirty six five dash three dash two required Town Council of the Town of Culver enact an ordinance establishing compensation for all appointed offices, deputies, employees of the Town of Culver for the calendar year two thousand twenty three.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes.
We needed to amend the salary ordinance to reflect the new agreed upon salary for the town manager.
Okay.
If it's not changed, then we're going to be paying him what we were paying the previous town manager until that's amended. So my recommendation would, the only thing that has changed is the town manager's salary.
Town manager salary of three thousand three hundred twenty six dollars and ninety two cents biweekly. It's split between thirty two percent to the clerk, thirty four percent to the water, and thirty four percent to the sewer. So I have a motion to approve that ordinance dash two oh two thousand twenty three dash oh one four. It's been moved, moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Do all approve it, go ahead and suspend the rules and pass on second, third.
Entertaining the most, suspend the rules. It's been moved by Mr. Githens, seconded by Mr. Ham, all those favors signify by saying aye.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, it's approved on second, third read.
You can just keep.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, okay, I have it correctly. Next on the item, agenda Spencer Center. Marty and Karen.
Requesting that the town consider becoming the person who appoints the person who represents the Town of Culver at the Marshall County Tourism Board. Currently, the Culver Chamber of Commerce appoints that person. And at this point in time, we know there's no standing executive board of the Culver Chamber. Plus, the person that was picked by the Culver Chamber, because their term is already up, it was two years, and that's Kate. So her term is up, we need representation on this tourism board so that the decision of where that money is going from the tourism, that we have representation on that board. So we are asking the town, like the Town of Argus, the Town of Bremen, and the Town of Bourbon, the Town Council appoints that person to that board. So we believe a letter to the county commissioners to request that change in the county ordinance could propose that the Town Council appoint someone to that represent us on the tourism board.
Do you have a recommendation?
The recommendation would be that you guys address the county commissioners either formally at a meeting or give a written request that the ordinance be changed, that the Town of Culver appoints that person to represent us instead of the Culver Chamber of Commerce.
And we included that letter a suggested nomination.
Yes, I would ask you to do that, Mark Demore has agreed to serve.
I would make a motion if we authorize the president to sign a letter to the Marshall, to the county commissioners suggesting that the county ordinance for the appointment of a Culver representative on the Marshall County Tourism Board be amended to have the appointment come from the Town Council and that 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 our recommendation is that that appointment be for Mark Demore.
Second.
You don't want to repeat that, do you? All those, all those in favor, second.
Well, question, Mark Demore Jr.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah. Wanted to clarify that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, somebody draft a letter.
I mean, talk to one of the two of you, I thought this is the county tourism board. I thought the statute changed, changed that around.
I don't, I think the statute changed to not require a balance commission. But I think that's all it did. I think the commissioners still have the ability to determine who selects. And the ordinance gets updated.
If that's the most current one, that's
Thank you.
All right, you.
Next on the agenda is a discussion of the pier slip fees. It's been proposed that there be a twenty percent increase for twenty twenty four for the piers. And basically what it works out to be is for a boat slip, for a resident slip, interior is going to be one thousand four hundred and forty dollars. That's up from one thousand three hundred and sixty eight dollars. An exterior is going to be one thousand seven hundred and forty, which is up from one thousand six hundred and fifty three. Non-residents, they're going to be one thousand seven hundred and forty interior and sixteen fifty two, first sixteen.
They are twenty percent different.
Yeah.
There's two.
So.
There's a discount.
Right.
There's a five percent discount if paid by January fifteenth, two thousand twenty four.
And I think you were reading the discounted.
Yeah, do you want me to take care of it?
Go ahead, Karen.
So the twenty twenty three Culver Park pier space rates for resident interior without the discounts, twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, we're going to be making bank. One thousand two hundred, let's go that route, sorry about that. And then we don't have an A D R M. So the twenty twenty four proposed rate for resident interior is one thousand four hundred and forty. Exterior in twenty twenty three was one thousand four hundred and fifty, up to proposed one thousand seven hundred and forty. For the non-resident, an interior, one thousand four hundred and fifty up. Then proposed to be one thousand seven hundred and forty. Exterior in twenty twenty three, one thousand seven hundred. Proposed two thousand forty dollars. And then for the resident heat up personal watercraft, it would go from five hundred to six hundred dollars for a resident, non-resident, six hundred to two hundred, seven hundred and twenty. And then it looks like the kayaks, a resident, go from two hundred and twenty five dollars to two hundred and seventy, and then non-resident, three hundred and twenty five to three hundred and ninety. So this is just being introduced this evening, we will have a public hearing on it in September, I believe it's second meeting in September.
Second, I think. Okay. Thank you, Karen. Do we do the Economic Development Commission?
Okay, so as Phil mentioned, we have to sort of revitalize the Economic Development Commission. There's three people on the commission, one appointment is by the Marshall County Council. They made an appointment, and I forget who they made. Okay, and then there's an appointment by the Town Council President and an appointment by the Town Council. I don't know if you have those people in place, you don't have to make that appointment tonight, but we do have to make that appointment the Economic Development Commission meets and does their thing.
We can do that, that's the next meeting.
So give some thought. Obviously, you know, if you want the project to go forward, you point to somebody in the E D C that's in favor.
Karen, I certainly leave some information about this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was just going to suggest, since it's usually our practice to entertain applications, that maybe you do that in this case as well, so that we don't. Well, I was just going to suggest, since it's usually our practice to entertain applications, that maybe you do that in this case as well, so that we don't, so that we're consistent in our actions. So if you want to put a deadline of Friday before the next meeting, that gives people three weeks.
I think that, I think that would suffice.
Okay, I will.
I'd move that we advertise for, um, perspective, we're interested, um, citizens of the town to apply for positions on the economic development commission with a deadline of Friday for our next meeting, whatever that one is.
Okay, that's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
September eighth.
Yes.
That's the Friday?
Yeah. Yeah. Department head reports, E M S. Nothing at this time. Fire.
Yeah, I have, uh, two things that, uh, I was gonna bring up tonight. I want to introduce, uh, our two newest firefighters that have passed, fire one and two, Austin Cooper and Janelle Vandepie. Some of our, uh, younger recruits, local people, hopefully they're gonna be around a long time.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, traditions of the fire department.
Uh, also, I want to bring up that we have, uh, we've been having a scuba dive training. Um, we've had a dive team for years, uh, some of us older guys are not doing it anymore. Uh, some of the younger guys are, so we put, we have about eight people in training right now. As of next weekend, the way I talked about tonight, that was last week, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, last weekend, this, this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Doing a lot of their time. Um, I, I think when they get done, they'll be, uh, we'll be much stronger for it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Barry. Police, Wayne, are you on?
Probably not, this, this is a, oh, be nice.
No, this is, thank you, Bill. Park, Amber. Okay. Utilities, Bob.
I have nothing for you, unless you have questions for me.
Alright, thank you. Steve.
Technical review committee in July had two meetings. Uh, first case was for a roof-mounted solar array at three fourteen South Palm Street that passed unanimously. And for renovations at fourteen twenty-fourth Drive, which also passed unanimously. The plan commission had four case hearings, this is all for July. And both additions and deletions to the Culver zoning ordinance regarding solar energy systems and battery storage units for the July meeting. So one, uh, first case was a zoning change, which was withdrawn on State Road ten. The next case, and for the plan commission, was fourteen Venetian Village, had a replat for lots thirteen and fourteen into a single lot, which passed. At nineteen four oh five eighteen Road, was a minor subdivision, split one lot into two lots, which passed. And then we had the application filed for approval of the rezoning that was discussed tonight. B Z A had two items on the agenda. The petition was filed for the property located at one ten North Palm Street, Cross Street. That request was withdrawn. And there was a petition filed for four oh four East Lake Street for a rear yard setback to ten feet, that was withdrawn. Building Commissioner, my report is building permits applied for in July, maybe in various stages of complete. Uh, Culver received one thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents. I don't have numbers for the B Z A and plan commission application fees that we receive. But on that note, Marshall County is reveal, reviewing the building permit fees, and I fully expect Martin County to raise their fees. The county is currently not covering all their costs. They expect a date for the new fee schedule to take place when they decide on it, it's gonna be January first. And I imagine that's going to be, I know that's gonna be happening soon, get that through the system. So the county keeps their fees off the top of what they collect, and then they'll pay Culver our fees. So when the county raises their fees, what we receive from the county will no longer cover a cost. Part of my job is gonna be to review and recommend application standard fees. I'll be working on an updated fee schedule to present that will be based on our cost process, the applications. I'll work on the supporting documentation and get this updated fee schedule to you as soon as I can. It would be ideal to update our fee schedule in concert with the county in January.
Alright.
That's all I have, unless anybody's got any questions for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Orson Commission.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Uh, what's the current fee, um, for building permits?
It depends. There's a schedule.
Oh, give me a raise then.
And I don't have it all, I don't have it all.
I'll talk to you later.
So.
I, I haven't posted in my office.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Anybody reporting on the plan commission? Steve?
I covered that.
Alright, okay. Redevelopment Commission.
Marty Ostroff reporting for the redevelopment commission. We met last evening. Um, we covered, I think, three things, a note, Sally, tell me if I missed anything. We, uh, approved a sub-recipient agreement, uh, which you also reviewed this evening. Uh, we, uh, in Mr. Bill Clavenger's words, took the lid off the box on the dunes, uh, project, and I think we had a healthy discussion. The meeting for redevelopment commission meeting was fairly well-intended last evening, and, um, uh, we, uh, had a very positive response to the discussion about the dunes. The vote on the redevelopment commission, as well as the, uh, discussion about the dunes, uh, while it doesn't require formal approval from the schools, we do have Karen as a non-voting member, uh, the head of the school, uh, community school operation here as a non-voting member of the redevelopment commission, and the principal of our elementary school is voting member of the redevelopment commission, they're both supportive of, uh, of that work, uh, the dunes project and the sub-recipient agreement. So wanted to report that. Um, we also had a facade grant that we approved last evening for, uh, roofing work on, uh, Dr. Couch's building there at Washington and Main Street, which is gonna be converted to a new subway, uh, franchise. And, um, also there will be, uh, another fast food, uh, kind of a food court approach to that. Uh, so we're gonna, uh, bring some more dining options to Culver, uh, as Main Street. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Karen, your report. Oh, Tree Commission, I'm sorry. No report, okay. Karen?
Several claims for your approval over, that are over two thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, first, do it right diving, uh, two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, and this is for the fire department dive training that Terry just spoke. Um, the U S Geological Survey for four thousand dollars. This is, uh, the cost to maintain the late gauge that is over on the landing. Um, we actually do split that three ways between us, the Lake Max and Cookie Environmental Council, and the Culver Academies. Um, Thomas Excavating, ninety-seven thousand, six, seven dollars and ninety-six cents. That is for the last pay app for the playground project. Um, using up the rest of the O C R funds, and those are on, uh, request, so hopefully we'll receive those, those suits. I am holding out one more, um, pay application, or the retainage, I'm holding onto that at this point. Um, Free Flow Environmental, sixteen thousand five hundred and eleven dollars, I think that was for the sub-pump for the elevator shaft, and then D M E elevators, ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. And that is for the ultimate repairs to the base plate for the elevator.
Motion to approve claims over twenty-five hundred dollars, please. It was moved by Mr. West, second of Mr. Githens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And other thing I have is just a reminder, um, and I'll get a notice out tomorrow, um, but we will have a work session on, at two P M on Friday, uh, to hopefully finish discussions on the budget. And then, um, just for the public's information, um, I will have a notice submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance by September fifth. Um, if you want to, uh, subscribe on our website for budget notices, you can do so, and that's I N dot gov slash D L G F. Um, and that first page, it, it brings up the gateway, and there's all kinds of information, um, on, on various units of government, um, that you can find there. Uh, we will have a public hearing September twenty-six on the twenty twenty-four budget, with hopes of final passage on October tenth, which is, um, a little bit ahead of their deadline of November second, I think, so we're coming to a close, hopefully.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Nice report.
Uh, again, thanks for your patience on the dunes thing. Uh, I thought it was productive. Uh, this morning, uh, some of you attended the, uh, hearing on the, uh, Mansfield petition for review of the four fifteen loss property. Uh, pretty much kind of went, was what I expected. They, you know, uh, the, the remonstrators argued that the B Z A should have considered and made decisions on more variance requests, uh. The B Z A did, responded to what was petition, uh, and the plan commission ball, went along with thinking that they had, uh, it's the variance group that was granted, were sufficient for the project. So we'll see what Judge Palmer's gonna do. Said about thirty days.
Thirty days.
Yeah, so, and he's pretty good about sticking to that.
He does.
Huge record, but, uh.
But he didn't give a, he just said thirty days, he didn't actually say that.
No, there's no, no other time. He'll, he'll, he'll issue a ruling like he did last time. I'll get it, share it when it comes out. Uh, but, uh, you know, the, we tried to point out kind of the critical parts of the record, so he doesn't have to go through the whole thing. And of course, he read the, the other parts before. Um, one kind of new business item is, we received a complaint for damages. In other words, the town's been sued by the estate of William Sailors, uh, uh, for an incident happening on August eighth, twenty twenty-one, at the town park. Where Mr. Sailor's attempted to ascend the stairway in the east pavilion of the town park and ripped and fell and was hurt. He's since deceased. He didn't die as a result of his injuries from the tripping, but they're trying to carry forward. Uh, we referred that to our insurance liability carrier, and they've hired Bob Keen, attorney in Fort Wayne, to defend the town, very capable. Uh, did a lot of insurance defense work, have worked with Mr. Keen before. Uh, it'll be interesting to see what approach he has, but, uh, I've got a loss as to how they're gonna prove their damages with a deceased individual, but, uh, that's been done, I guess. Uh, I'll keep you updated when necessary for that. That's probably a long time before. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Anyone online for utility shut-off? Ordinance violation? Anyone in the room? Hearing none. Citizen input. Yes. Citizen input.
I'm here.
Name, name, please.
Jerry Burke, four thirteen thousand. And I'm here in support of Pessmy Rogers, who was the head of the children's department at the Culver Public Library. Was recently terminated. Knowing as me as I do, and the wonderful job she has done at the library, I cannot recall why there was a termination. This is a loss to our public library. It is a loss to our town. I have two questions. One, does the library, uh, library board have an oversight committee? Anybody know?
Oh, no, they don't, I know.
They do not?
Nope.
Mr. Clavenger, attorney also for the Culver Library, as you are. Let me know who that attorney was.
Yes, it's Adam Lukenville, and I will read a statement if you give me permission.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Githens, you want to read your statement, please?
Culver community and library patrons. As you may have heard by now, we have had a change in personnel at the library. Although we cannot comment on the specifics of employment matters, our desire is that the community continues to trust that all decisions made are with the library's mission in mind. Try to be communities vibrant, overthinking hub for activity, access, and engagement. We understand that might look a little different to everyone, which can lead to some frustration, as we strive to take steps, move the library forward. We also recognize a pause in a public response to this change may be construed as not being transparent. However, rest assured, it was a pause to gauge how best to move forward, honoring the library's values and maintaining confidentiality on personnel matters. We continue to strive to be an asset to the community, Culver community. We welcome questions and concerns about the direction of the library, and the library's goals can be found at culver dot L I B dot Indiana dot U S. Sincerely, the Board of Directors Cul Reunion Township Public Library. I will tell you that this, uh, went out on the, uh, library's, uh, Facebook page this afternoon, and it has also been forwarded to the, uh, Pilot News. And I have copies of this for anyone who care, would care to take it with them after the meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Githen.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Brian Rogers, nine twenty-four, Academy Road. Um, I challenge that statement because I'm gonna say statistics alone that I have from the library show that eight out of ten people that go to the library go to the children's department. Okay, eight out of ten, eighty-three percent. So you're telling me, yeah, let me talk. You're telling me that you're cutting that heart of the children's department out of the heart of the library, which is the heart of the city, and you're saying that's for the best good of our constituents?
All, all I'm going to say is, this is not the forum.
What you're talking about.
Okay.
The forum is to come to our library meeting next month, Tuesday, September eighteenth or nineteenth at seven P M.
Okay. I, let me apologize. I'm gonna calm down. I need you to help me, sir. Okay, um. You're not questioning Esme getting her job back. Can be perfectly clear on that. She's gone past that. We are questioning the leadership that's led to that. My wife, and her husband, my wife was attacked. And I don't mean ambush is a better word. She was intimidated on the point of harassment. And we are letting these people continue on, and you're taking away the heart of the library. Now, I'm not asking you to comment. What I am saying is the library is in this whole initiative of trying to get money for a refresh. Bill, you've just lost the town. You've lost it. You're not gonna get one dime from us.
Mr. Rogers, I, I
Sorry.
I, I respect you and, uh, in your position, but, and I
I apologize, I apologize.
No, no apologies necessary, but I think that in view of the, the forum is the library board, um, because town council doesn't really have any direct connection with that, but anyone wants to make a comment, I welcome that. But I don't want to get into, I know this is not the forum for a debate, so anyone else like to make a comment? Yes, Russ?
I just have a question to build as a member of the library board. Do you have, does the board have final say on dismissals, or is it strictly up to the librarian to make that decision?
It is up to the director of the library.
Okay, so they, they don't, that director doesn't come to you and, and ask for
Permission?
Permission or agreement or whatever.
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing, and I, I promise that we get it?
Go ahead.
Just, um, the, the whole way it was done, and I'm not, I'm not saying, it's just, I want the town. And I'm not, I'm not saying, it's just, I want the town to know. And I want you as a council, I appreciate your ears, council. I really do. I just want the town to know of the injustice done. Okay, and as long as I'm stated and it's in the record, this was wrong, the whole process was wrong, and I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have a comment?
On this matter or another matter?
Any matter.
Any matter.
Yes, I do. John Chris, 918 West Shore. John? Have you gotten any reports on people having problems with their garage door openers as a result of surf nets installation of the fiber optic?
No.
No.
No. We've had problems with our garage door opener working with the last three months. And garage door, DC garage door came out. And our remotes would work periodically, intermittently, and very little range. A little bit of research I did indicated that it might be the logic board. And I expressed that to the garage door openers company, DC Garage Door this morning. And they said, well, we've had a number of houses all along West Shore that have had the same problem, and it's due to the fiber optic cable coming in. I thought that was kind of funny. And, and because my research said that the logic boards needed to be replaced in what I was looking at online about this. And in fact, DC Garage Door said that they did my next door neighbors about a month ago, and they replaced the logic board, and that did not fix it. They had, she had to have her entire opener replaced. And we are going to have two openers replaced on Thursday. And apparently, while fiber optic doesn't create any radio frequency interference, it does have an effect on copper wires creating it. And, you know, as you know, you got copper wires coming in for your electric, for your phone, et cetera. And we do have our power line. Our comes to our house, the full, that's about 15 foot on the corner of the garage and runs down along the side of the garage. So, and DC Garage Door said that there had been several other openers that they've had to replace all along West Shore Drive. So I figured, well, if it's due to the fiber optic coming in, if anybody's reported any problems like that.
Have you felt so?
Not yet. I didn't, I didn't know it was surf until.
Oh, okay.
Today.
No.
I mean, I mean.
That would be my suggestion is.
But I just, just wondering if you've had any reports.
I have another thing. I mean, my internet runs parallel about probably 12 inches away from my incoming power line. And I have my garage door openers work just as good as they always have. So, you know, I have no clue.
I asked, I asked some of my other neighbors if they'd had problems, and they said no.
Yeah.
But again, my next door neighbor had hers replaced about a month ago. We're getting ours replaced Thursday, and they said DC Garage Door said they've done two or three others all along West Shore.
But they same, same manufacturers of the openers?
I'm assuming. I know our next door neighbors was the same as ours.
Liftmaster?
Yes.
Yep. That's the predominant one there.
Right, right.
The other thing would be if you got your cable buried, your electrical cable buried, as opposed to coming in from a pole. I'm just saying.
Well, it, it, it comes from a pole.
To the house?
The pole is 15 foot from the house. It goes to the pole and goes down the pole and goes underground.
So you have buried the, the house?
Yes. Hey, now, now, we don't, we don't not subscribe to certain net. It's, it's just, you know, the, the fiber optic is running down the street. And that, and that's about 150 to 160 feet from our garage door. So.
Interesting. That is interesting.
If, if, if there's been any reports of that.
No, thank you. Yes, sir.
Robert Paul, 439 Lake Street. I just would like to thank the whole council, Karen, everyone that's involved. And, you know, I sit in these meetings through the summer, have a summer resident, and the complexity of all the things that are presented to this board is absolutely overwhelming. And all I can say to all of you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Very kind of you.
Yes.
I mean, yes, sir.
Terry Chazaldean, 520 South Plum. Just a question on the status of the unsafe building commission?
Do you have a question? Do you just got to answer it?
What's the question?
Does it exist?
Why it needs to be called together? Do you have specific property in mind?
Yes.
Which one?
We discussed that. I just wanted one next meeting, Mike, to know.
The, the process will be, first of all, then I have to get with one town council. Larry, I'll be Janet. And I've worked with her. She's got quite a bit of experience in that.
Right.
They tell you they're ready to start demolition on 815 and a half acre. Any equipment there? So that demolition should start soon. I was in contact with Mr. Yat, who owns that property. And he's waiting on, he believes the contractor is waiting on to arrive and expects that to begin demo this week.
But is there not a regular schedule for this committee?
There is not.
What, what instigates that meeting?
When we, when somebody, you know, for instance, complains about a particular property name.
Is there?
Investigation.
Is there a phone?
Or.
Maybe with a meeting to discuss property.
We'll know.
So what would a citizen need to do to convene such a meeting?
Let me know. We've already, we've already discussed property that you have in mind. So I'll be working towards that.
Okay. Because I was told that we were waiting for the town manager to come on board. So.
I'm going to tell you that, but we don't have to wait for that one. We can move forward.
Any other citizen input? Anyone online? Council issues, Rich?
I think, I want to thank everybody on the, for the information on the Dunes project. I think that was a very useful and helpful discussion. And it's Marty's, that's quoting you, taking the lid off the box as we move forward.
Bill?
Nothing.
Sally?
I have nothing to add.
I have nothing, Bill?
Nothing new.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, move, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Finally, aye.